Apparently he always makes good on it, but I like that assistance check. It might help him.
Okay. All right, folks. We are ready to begin, and I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag? Okay, all right. Teresa, roll call, please. Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Collins. Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn is excused.
Okay, and Collins is excused, too. Okay, and scheduled business this evening, we have a couple quasi-judicial public hearings. And first on tonight's agenda is regarding planning file CP 0114 and ZC 114. Request for comprehensive plan amendment to change the designation of one parcel from the low-density residential and general commercial to the medium-density residential designation, and change the zoning from single-family residential RS 6.5 and community commercial to the residential medium-density attached district. The applicant is RJ Aldrich, represented by Rich Catlin with Reese &amp; Associates. The location of the proposed zone change is 241 Waverly Drive Southeast. So at this time, I'll order the public -- call the public hearing at 7:17 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the meeting recorder, which has been -- it's already up here. And do any members wish to declare conflict of interest? Counselors? Okay. Do any members wish to report any expartee contact? Okay. And do any members wish to report a site visit?
I had to go by and take a look at it.
Okay, all right. So is that a site visit, Bessie?
I don't know what that comes -- I know. It just kind of comes up by itself.
Yeah. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Okay. And does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing and decision? Okay. For all of those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in corresponding extension to the 120-day limit. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So at this time, I call for the staff report and planner David Martineau.
Good evening, members of the council and mayor. I'm David Martineau, the lead current planner for the city of Albany. What you have up here on the screen shows what the current property's comprehensive plan designation is. It is low-density residential, and it abuts property that's within the general commercial zone. Okay, so essentially, this property is 1.38 acres, and the image on the left shows what the current designation is. It's zoned RS 6.5, single-family residential, in the low-density residential zone. And if this request is approved tonight, then the property would be re-designated as medium-density residential and RMA zoning. So to summarize the request, RJ Aldrich, represented by Rich Catlin of Reese &amp; Associates, has applied to change the comprehensive plan designation on this property, again, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. A concurrent zoning map amendment would change the zoning of the property from RS 6.5 to residential medium-density attached. The property is located at 241 Waverly Drive Southeast, and it's bordered by single-family and duplex dwellings to the north, along with a motel to the east and to the south. There's an auto-lube service center to the south as well, and there's a car wash located southwest on the property. There's single-family residences located further west across Waverly Drive, and the site is also in close proximity to Waverly Elementary School to the west and Waverly Park to the east. The land uses on the property that are designated general commercial abutting the site to the south, that's where those areas are with the motels and the automobile service center. Those are uses that would be characteristic in a general commercial designated area. The applicant points out that the existing residential uses to the north and the west of this property are in an area that's designated low-density residential, but they actually reflect a mixture of different housing types and densities. Housing types include single-family, duplexes, and multifamily developments that lie within this neighborhood's RS 6.5 zoning district, so there really is no predominant housing type in this area. The proposed zone change does have the potential to add some trips to the Pacific Boulevard-Waverly Drive intersection. However, the city's transportation system plan identifies a future improvement project prior to 2030 at that intersection, and the intersection is also under the jurisdiction of Oregon Department of Transportation. Public utilities in the area are capable of accommodating the existing development as well as future development allowed in the proposed zone. The existing public storm drainage facilities in this area are capable of accommodating most residential development that would occur in the proposed zone. Any site development that may occur will likely end up having to put onsite stormwater detention to protect the public system from being overloaded. So the property at 241 Waverly Drive Southeast is somewhat irregularly shaped, and because it's a relatively small property, it is very difficult to try to develop single homes or single-family homes together with providing the necessary infrastructure that would be needed to serve it, as well as access. In addition, the character of the surrounding neighborhood is one that provides a wide variety of housing types and sizes built over the years, ranging from single-family detached all the way to apartment buildings containing multiple units. The subject property serves as a transition between commercial businesses to the south with neighborhood residential uses to the north. Waverly Drive is an arterial street. It's a minor arterial, and public transportation that provides access to schools, parks, and shopping is available nearby. On balance, we believe the evidence supports changing the comprehensive plan map designation to medium-density residential and the zoning to residential medium-density attached. Therefore, staff, together with the planning commission by a vote of six to two, recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendments.
Okay, all right. Do any counselors have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Dick?
Yeah. Well, I see in this proposal, you're talking about changing the zoning to RMA.
Yes, sir.
And in the next hearing that we're going to have, we're talking about another zone change, and again, it's medium-density. In this case, it's RM. Can you tell me the difference between RM and RMA?
Yes. There's a couple of fundamental differences. In the RM zone, single-family detached dwellings are allowed. RMA zoning does not. If you want a single-family dwelling, they have to be attached units like condominiums, or they'd need to be a duplex or apartment buildings where the dwellings are all attached. The range of uses, residential uses in the RMA is more restrictive than the RM. The RM tends to allow a variety of uses, even mobile home parks.
So RMA is essentially an apartment zone?
Yes, you could say that. That or condominiums, that are single-family attached. Yes, it could be either one of those.
Seems to me apartment zone next to single-family zone is kind of adverse to what I've always thought of as the purpose of zoning, I guess.
Okay, Bessie?
I was just wondering, do you know with the planning commission, when they -- the six to two?
Yes.
What the negative reasons for the two -- do you know why they were going in that direction?
Yeah, I think, for one thing, in this particular case, we did receive some testimony. A couple of pieces of testimony came in, both in writing and also at the planning commission hearing. And there's concerns from a couple of people that was raised. One, thinking that the new zoning was not compatible with the existing neighborhood in general. And they also questioned the accuracy of the city's housing needs analysis, because the last update was done in 2007. And that's the document that we needed to use to justify some kind of a comprehensive plan amendment when it comes to housing. But it is, you know, eight years out of date. But the law requires that we follow that document unless it becomes updated with fresher data, so. They did take some exception to the fact that that document was as old as that. And then another person testified at the hearing who lives directly north of the property, and she explained that, in her opinion, most of the properties were owner-occupied homes, but over the years since 1990, they've become more and more like rental units. And she felt that the neighborhood scale just feels different because of that. She concedes that there are multiple family dwellings nearby, but she points out that they're single-story and they blend into the area. And in this particular case, there's no development proposal on the deck yet. The zone would allow for apartments or condominiums, but there's nothing yet that's conclusive that states that they're going to be either single or two-story or anything like that. So it really is just looking at the zoning as far as what could be allowed there, but there is no actual development that's been applied for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Certainly.
Rich, and then Ray.
Within the code, in RMA, when you put an apartment in, how much parking is required vis-à-vis the number of apartments?
Sure. What we have in our parking standards is based on the number of bedrooms in the apartment complex, so for each one-bedroom dwelling unit, you're required to have one space. If you have a two-bedroom dwelling unit, you need to have one and a half spaces. If you have three or four-bedroom units, then each unit needs two spaces. So that's basically -- that's what we use to form, you know, whatever the parking requirement. And on top of that, for every four required spaces, there needs to be one visitor space as well.
Given that, are they able to then use any of the spaces on the street to come up with the total number of spaces, or is that off-street parking we're talking about?
That is off-street parking, and there are certain uses in the city that can count on-street parking, but multifamily development is not among those.
Thank you.
Just noticing the map, maybe some overly simplistic question, but what is the necessity for transferring that little sliver of land from one section to another?
So that little sliver that you see, that's actually about 650 square feet. And that sliver that's on the southeast corner of the property? So where it's pointing to the subject property, the very southeast corner, abutting the general commercial designation, there's this tiny little wedge, and that wedge was a result of a property line adjustment that took place about six years ago. And it was a property line adjustment between the motel owner and the residential property owner next door. And I believe it had something to do with the location of a fence, so they made it right. But what happened is you ended up with a tiny wedge or a sliver of community commercial zone land on this property. And so in this request, we would be cleaning that up.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then present it to the clerk. Would the applicant like to come forward? And please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the city council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, staff and audience. My name is Rich Catlin. I'm a land use planner with Reese &amp; Associates, 321 First Avenue East in Albany, representing the owner, RJ Aldrich. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. The purpose of this hearing is this is the second hearing required by the code in order to review a zone change proposal. There are three handouts that I've given to the clerk, and those are being passed around, and in a few moments, I'll get to a description of those handouts. So a few highlights about the application. First, as David said, this is a mixed residential area. And if you take a look at the uses that are in this area, and then if you take a look at the code, including the zone that is applied to this area, there's really no zone that's appropriate for the mix of housing in this area. So it's a little bit of misnomer to say that this is a single-family residential area, because it's really an area that shows a character that's developed over time, detached, single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes.
Rich, can we hang on just a sec?
We've got to redeal the cards.
We didn't follow instructions, sorry.
No staple.
So I think we kind of missed some of your testimony.
Are these all the same, Rich?
No.
Three different pictures.
No, three different things.
So here's southwest of the Albany property. Here's northeast. So here's another set.
So we have three.
I've got everything. I've got the three. This is the hardest.
Hang on.
Northwest, northeast, northwest.
Anybody? Any extra northwest?
I've got northeast.
I'll tell you northwest.
I have southwest.
You have three sheets, is what you're saying?
I've got three sheets.
Three sheets.
Northeast, northwest, and southwest.
He gave me a bunch of northeast.
Okay. I think we've got our act together now, so.
And for the audience, that's my fault for not explaining the difference between the three sheets. So there are three sheets. They're labeled in the upper right-hand corner as northeast, northwest, and southeast.
Southeast or southwest?
Southwest.
You know, we're confused enough.
Thank you. I'll help that along a little bit if I'm not careful. So I was describing the character of this area, different housing types, and that there is no particular zone in the Albany code that matches the development pattern in this area. When you take a look at the residences or look at the properties within 300 feet of the Aldrich property, there are 59 units on six and a half acres, so the average density throughout this neighborhood is nine units per acre. So it's higher than a single-family, lower than a typical medium family. So why the preference for RMA over RS 6.5? David alluded to some of it. One is that it's a relatively small property, and it's difficult to come up with a reasonable development pattern for detached, single-family homes. It's small. It's got an odd configuration. We looked at dividing it up with no internal street access, and there's limited frontage, so looking at pulling a street into the site, a cul-de-sac consumes a fair portion of the property. So the RMA will provide a more efficient way to develop and use the land. It's also a -- RMA is a better transition between the commercial-zoned property immediately adjacent with the motel and the car wash and those kind of uses, and then the residential uses that are farther away from Pacific Boulevard. So the application is based primarily on the Albany housing needs analysis for the years 2005 to 2025, and David mentioned that in his testimony. There's a table in that analysis that says that Albany is short 44 acres of RMA and has a surplus of 321 acres of RS 6.5. So the proposal is to reduce the amount of land zone RS 6.5 and increase the amount of land zone RMA, which is in keeping with the analysis. So this zone change would be a step into filling the need perceived by that analysis. David mentioned that there was a traffic impact analysis conducted for this application that's required as a matter of state law and local requirement. The analysis is based on what is termed the reasonable worst-case scenario, so if you dive into that report and look at it in detail, you'll see there's an analysis based on 35 dwelling units. That's not a specific proposal. That's only a -- it's only an analysis of how the maximum number of units that possibly could be developed on this site. And so the analysis was based on 35 dwelling units, and the analysis concluded that the impact is minimal and falls below any threshold for additional analysis. ODOT has reviewed the report. They agree with the conclusions in it, and they require no more analysis or mitigation as part of the zone change application. Your staff report indicates that in 2007, there was a comparable application filed. This application is different from that application in a couple significant ways. One is that, at that time, the housing needs analysis was not complete, and so there was great discussion in that application as to the appropriate measures that should be used to determine whether or not it was timely to change the zoning. Another difference is that that request was for RM3 zoning, high-density residential, which is far more dense than the RMA that's under -- that's the proposal tonight. And also, at that time, even though RJ Aldrich was the owner of the property, he was a contract seller, so he was not the one who was representing the application at that time. So in conclusion, we believe that the application before you is a better fit for how this property can be developed. It's a more efficient use of the land. It's compatible somewhat with aspects of the neighborhood. It's a relatively small project area, so it would integrate well. The RMA is a transition zone between the commercial and the low-density residential, and it's close to school, shopping, and transit. So I'll briefly go over the graphics that you have. The first one is labeled northeast of the Aldrich property. So if you can imagine stepping into a hot air balloon on the Aldrich property and going up to about 300 feet and looking to the northeast, this is the view that you would have. It points out three different multifamily properties that are nearby, and what the density is on those properties, 10 units per acre, 12 units per acre, and nine units per acre, and they're mixed in well with the neighborhood. Then the next one would be looking northwest of the Aldrich property. There is a 15-unit apartment on the corner of Salem and Waverly Drive and Fulton Street that's 27 units per acre. And then looking southwest of the Aldrich property is the third one. There is an 11-unit apartment on .41 acres, which is equivalent to about 27 units per acre. So it's a mixed-character neighborhood. There's no one type of housing type in this area, and we believe that this is a project that could fit in. So that would conclude my comments, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Any questions, Rich? Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. So does any member of the audience wish to speak in support of the application? All right. And for any member wishing to speak in opposition, there was one that had signed up, and that was Casey Tegner. And so, Casey, if you can state your name, spell your last name, and furnish your address.
Okay, Casey Tegner, T-E-G-N-E-R. And my address is 221 Waverly Drive, southeast. I am the neighbor directly to the north of this proposed property, or the property that's there with this proposed project. So it's my bedroom window, my family room window, my kitchen window that are on that side of the house that are looking onto this property. And much has been made about the aerial view photos, but being at the street view and living there for 25 years, it's a lot different. It is a small, quiet neighborhood. There are two multifamily units close by, one directly across from the Jiffy Lube place that empties out onto Fourth, and then one at the other end that empties out onto Salem Road that don't have a direct impact on Waverly Drive. The houses are mostly World War II era cinder block houses across the street from us. We've put 25 years into a house that was literally falling down when we bought it, and we don't plan on going anywhere. We're invested in this neighborhood, and we're going to stay there till they take us out feet first. We're concerned about our property value. We will be an island of a single-family home surrounded by potentially at least 35 units, and to say that that will have not an impact on the neighborhood is ridiculous. If you put that many units on that size of property, you can see that the property is larger than any other single property in the area. And so up to 35 units right there would have a huge impact on the feel of the neighborhood. It's an awkward lot, and I've heard a lot of talk about, oh, well, we don't have any real plans, except that the plans that came through for the planning commission and also here had attached site plans that showed 35 units, two stories. Once this designation for zoning is changed, it's changed. They can do whatever they want with it up to the limits of that zoning, and that's what's scary for us. It also has a minimal impact on the city's need for medium-density residential. It's a tick compared to what's needed, and there's a lot more appropriate places. It's also been said that it's a good transition, but it's not. It's just going to overwhelm the neighborhood. You're going to go from a quasi-busy corner to a huge apartment complex and then empty into small, mostly small, single-family homes. They tried this years ago, and it failed because the planning commission at that time saw that it was going to have a huge impact on the neighborhood. I'm sure I would have my neighbors here with me, but most of them are renters, and they probably don't even know this is going on except for the sign out on the property. I'm sure the homeowners were sent the information, and they probably didn't pass it on to their renters. 25 years ago, it was an unimproved street, gravel into the yard. We gave up about seven feet of our yard to have it improved with curb, and I just think that this is going to be a huge change for that neighborhood. It's not going to be this minimal or transition zone or however they want to phrase it. It's just going to change, completely change the neighborhood.
Right? Any questions, Ms. Tegner? Okay, all right. Thank you. That was it that I had sign up for in opposition, so is there anyone that would still like to come and testify in either in favor or against? Okay, not seeing anyone. And does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair, and again, members of the city council. Just a brief reminder, this is an acre and a third. It's not a large project. Albany needs this size-type project for multifamily development, because it integrates well into existing neighborhoods. So this is an appropriate location for this type of use. There's no specific proposal on the board tonight. The plan that Ms. Tegner referred to is the hypothetical that was included with the traffic report that's required for that hypothetical reasonable worst-case analysis. We're not suggesting that it would be that many or that it couldn't be that many. There simply isn't a plan on the table this evening for you to consider. It's just the zone change.
All right.
I have a question.
Bessie?
Just so that I -- I think I know where it is. I didn't drive by or anything, but, Rich, what is to the south of the property that you want to -- that you -- you want to, that you, that you, in question? What is, is that?
It's a motel.
Along the street frontage, it's car wash.
Car wash. Okay. So the car wash and the Lube Express or something?
Right.
Okay. That's what I thought, but it didn't look right somehow. So, so it's right behind that. And then on the north of it is...
The Tegner residence on one side of the north boundary and a three or four-plex on the other side of the boundary.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks.
And then it's still a motel on the south.
Yes.
Yeah. That borders Pacific.
Yes. In the general community.
Okay. That helps.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Rich?
Maybe this isn't for Rich. I don't know. Setbacks for, if you got a two-story apartment?
That would be for staff questions. So we'll wait to...
Well, he probably knows, but...
Yeah. We'll get to that. Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. All right. Thank you. And does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented?
I'd like to respond to the Councilmember Kellum's question, if I could. Setbacks in that zone for apartment buildings would be one foot of setback for each foot in wall height. So if you had a two-story apartment building, say, that had a wall height of twenty-four feet, the setback would be at least twenty-four feet from the property line.
I thought a part of our great neighborhoods, though, we, I thought they had to transition. The first units that were bordering the property line, if it was single-family, had to be single-story. And then the next unit would be...
That's also correct, yes. And where buts single-family residential, it would be single-story. And then the setback is designed to be a step-back provision so that it gets higher as you go further into the property.
So what would end up bordering on the north end towards single-family would have to be one-story units?
I believe so. I'd have to double-check the zoning code to make sure, though.
That would be one-story units twenty-four feet away. Or is that less than twenty-four feet because they're one-story?
I think we should check the zoning code. I have my copy with me. If you would allow me to, I can find that out.
Yeah. Because back in the nineties, we went through kind of the same, you know, pendulum swinging again this way towards a lot of apartments being built. And so we had established that to be able to be more compatible with single-family residential. So, yeah. Okay.
Colleague's going to grab the plan real quick and I can, or the zoning code, and we'll look that up.
Okay.
Seven copies all at once. Ask in you shall receive. So you can use, shall find.
Thank you.
Lock and the door will be open.
So for the minimum interior for single-story in the RMA zone, it's ten feet. Then it says, if it were a single-family home, attached or detached, or duplexes, then the setback could be three feet for one-story dwellings or five feet for two-story dwellings. That's, again, the minimum interior setback for a single-story unit. Then there's a minimum interior setback for two or more stories, which is also ten feet with the condition that says more than three stories is ten feet plus three feet for each story over three per unit requirements. But there's also a separate part of the code in our design standards that has special setbacks for multiple-family developments. And so I would refer to that section of the code, eight-point-two-seven-oh. So this is the transition that you spoke of regarding transition to lower-density uses. And when abutting single-family homes, buildings shall be set back at least one foot for each foot in building height from the property line. The building height is measured from the average grade to the top of the wall facing the property line. So that's a situation where you have that step-back provision, where if you had a twenty-four-foot wall, it would have to be set back twenty-four feet, not the ten-foot minimum requirement because the standard is the stricter of the two. Smaller-scale buildings should be sighted in the area immediately adjacent to single-family zoning districts, and larger-scale buildings sighted at the interior of the development or adjacent to other multiple-family developments. And then parking and maneuvering areas, driveways, recreation areas, dumpsters, and so on should not be located between multiple-family buildings and abutting single-family homes.
Okay. Good. Okay.
That's for either RM or RMA zoning?
I believe so, yes. Let me double-check that, though. Yes, those footnotes would apply in both of those zones.
Okay. All right. Is that all? Bessie?
So bottom, bottom line, after all those numbers you just said, if this were a two-story thirty, and this is hypothetical, two-story, thirty-five unit, whatever, so the setback would be?
Twenty-four feet.
Be twenty-four.
Or whatever the wall height is for that two-story. So if it were, if it had a wall height of twenty-four feet, that would be the setback.
Excellent. Okay.
But do keep in mind that even if it were developed at that level of density, there's maximum lot coverage standards in the code. There's other design standards which require a certain amount of open space in recreation areas. There's parking requirements all off-street. So all of those factors go into determining just how many units you can actually fit on the property. And in my own, my own opinion, thirty-five is quite high.
Yeah, I do too. I do too. All right. Thanks, Dave.
So when it comes to the site plan review, is that just done administratively, or will that be going to the Planning Commission?
See, for apartment dwellings in that zone, it would likely be a site plan review. I can tell you right here. Yes, it would be a site plan review. It would not go to the Planning Commission.
Dick, did you staff question?
Yeah. Are there any restrictions onto the height of the building in the RM zone?
In the RM zone? The maximum building height in the RM zone is forty-five feet. In the RMA zone, it's sixty feet.
A sixty-foot building, that'd be what? Five stories? Three stories?
Probably at least four, maybe five.
Four or five.
Again, the limiting factor here still is the parking situation and the open space.
With a blight in your neighborhood and have a five-story building and a lot next door?
I don't know.
But if it's five stories, they're going to have to do under first-floor parking because I don't think they'd make that for parking requirements.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Yeah. So... Okay. Any other questions of staff? Yeah, Rich?
Well, I guess maybe none, no. How far away from the property line is Ms. Tegner's?
Her property butts this property directly to the north.
How far away is the house?
Uh...
Should we tell you?
It looks pretty close.
It looks close. I don't know the specific distance. And I don't know, looking at that footprint, whether that's part of the house or garage that's attached. I'm not sure.
Looks like there's a shed in back of the house.
And there also, to the south of her house, it looks like there is an extra building. It could be an unattached garage. I was going to ask her.
I don't. Try to hear.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
No.
Okay. All right.
Madam Mayor, procedurally, you're going to have to give both sites an opportunity to respond to new information that's been submitted by staff at this point. If they have, the testimony should be responsive to the staff comments or the council questions or comments.
Okay. All right. So would Mr. Catlin or Ms. Tegner want to respond to anything that was just raised, talking about building heights and what the setbacks were? No? Okay. All right. Okay. With that, anything else, David?
No, that's...
Okay. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed at seven fifty-three PM. And council, so discussions, do you have more questions of staff? There is a...
I'm kind of wondering about what the value of zoning is, if we can stick an apartment house zone right next to a single-family and not bat an eyelash about it. Could we stick a industrial chunk of property in there of some sort? I mean, would be cool about that.
I would have a comment on that. I'm thinking right to the south of it is the car wash and whatever. And so it's not like it's sticking it right in the middle of a residential. We have a little, it's like mixed use. And so my concern is the setback and, I mean, if it can be setback enough, and also the amount of apartments that would be there. I know, Rich, you said that, you know, thirty-five probably isn't going to be it, but it's, it just doesn't seem big enough to be that many. And I, since it's not going to come to us, we have no control over if it's thirty-five or maybe fifteen. It's, because the parking is, is a big deal because there's not a lot of, I mean, there's no, there's a little bit of on-street parking around that area, but not much. So I, I don't know.
Rich?
I have a concern about the number of people. I mean, if you're talking about thirty, and it depends, you know, thirty apartments, thirty apartments with two people and each one sixty people. If you have children, then it's, you know, I mean, it, I don't know what the national average in a, in an apartment is, you know, two-point-one-three-five or, you know, whatever it is. Doesn't make any difference. You're talking about fifty people next door to you. Apartments by their nature are not generally quiet places. I mean, if you have any question of that, just move to Corvallis. It may be worse over there because a lot of them are students, but, I mean, the, the quietness of a neighborhood goes sideways, at least it's been my experience, when you, when you bring numbers more people. And it may just be a function of how many people are there. The second thing I have an issue with or have a concern about is a second-story looking into the back window of somebody's place. If you now have a, an open feel to your home, and now you have someone who can literally open their shades, and you better make sure your shades are closed all the time, or they're looking inside your, your kitchen or bedroom or whatever it is on that side. That's, you know, it is a loss of, I don't know. It's a loss of good feeling, you know, from my perspective. That's my concern. Yeah. I'd have to agree with that. I think if it's, if it's one, two-story house next door, you got a neighbor there, and you figure your neighbor's not going to be peeping at you. But if you got a whole line of apartments next door, I think it pretty much negates the use of that side of your house as far as the windows are concerned. So I feel kind of queasy about the whole thing.
And council, what would you like to do with this item? So you have an ordinance that's on page four. You have some motions on your yellow sheet in your packet.
Move it up the ordinance.
Okay. Well, it needs to be read.
It's an ordinance, amending ordinance number four-four-four-seven, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and amending ordinance four-four-four-one, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map. Adopting findings for property located at two-forty-one Waverly Street, Southeastland County Associates Map Number eleven S-three-W-five-D-D, tax lot four-hundred, and declaring an emergency.
Do you want the ordinance read a second time or not?
I'll do it, yeah. Move the reading second time title only.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So that is, the ordinance won't be read a second time then this evening, so on that. And so I'll hold off on reading this. So that will be taken up and for, for the guest on this wanting to know what happened, we have to have a unanimous vote when it comes to, to read the ordinance a second time. So since we didn't, then it's going to be held over for two weeks for our next council meeting, and then that's when they'll be reading the ordinance a second time, and then either adopt or not the ordinance and deliberate then.
You can be protected.
Okay. All right.
So that allows you to bring in some neighbors if you can run them out.
No. The hearing is closed.
Hearing's closed, yes. But there's business in the public.
Right. And which the hearing is closed, and so the council's not having ex parte contact.
That's correct.
So I would ask also that no counselors are notified or contacted because we've already closed the hearing, and we cannot have any ex parte contact. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is another quasi-judicial public hearing regarding planning file, CZ-oh-one-fifteen, request for zoning map amendment to change one parcel from the Office Professional OP District to the Residential Medium Density RM District. The applicant and previous owner is Kenneth Marshall, and the current owner is Patricia Neal. The location of the proposed zone change is an unaddressed property east of sixteen-fifty-five Gary Street, southeast. I call, call to order this public hearing at eight PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the meeting recorder. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Any counselors? And do any counselors wish to report any ex parte contact?
I go by there all the time, so...
Okay. And that would be for a report of site visit. So, Bessie, drive by. Okay? And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the City Council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing and decision? Okay. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. If you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in a corresponding extension to the hundred-and-twenty-day limit. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Okay. At this time, a call for the staff report, and Planner Melissa Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. So tonight is another proposed zone change. However, this one differs in that there is not a proposal to amend the Comprehensive Plan Map, and the site is considerably smaller. So this site is currently vacant. It's an unaddressed parcel just east of sixteen-fifty-five Gary Street. It faces Seventeenth Avenue. And it's only five thousand square feet. It, as you can see in the picture, it's vacant. And the process for this type of decision is a type-four quasi-judicial decision, and the criteria for that decision is under the Albany Development Code two-point-seven-four-oh, criteria one through five. And we send out public notices, and the Planning Commission had a public hearing on this. They recommended to the City Council to approve this proposed zone change, and now we have follow-up public hearing again with the City Council, who has the final decision. And so the, the zone currently is Office Professional, and the proposal is to change it to RM, Residential Medium Density. And the adjacent zone to the north and also to the east is also RM, or Residential Medium Density. And so it's consistent with the, the properties, the land uses are residential to the east, a single-family home. There's a triplex to the north. And... And the Comprehensive Plan Map designation currently is Residential Medium Density, and there's no proposed change to that, and that accommodates that RM zone. So, criteria one, is it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Map designation? Well, this lot, it's only five thousand square feet, it's adjacent to properties that are zoned RM, there's no Comp Plan Map change, and the RM zone is consistent with that Residential Medium Density Comprehensive Plan Map designation, so it does meet that criteria. Also, number two, is that the transportation facilities, they're adequate to serve the allowed uses that would be in the RM zone, and this is an urbanized area, there's already an existing transportation system, and this re-zone would result in possibly a small reduction in traffic volumes, minor, but there's certainly no increase. And so there's no significant effect on the transportation system, so that criteria is also met. The next is that there's public utilities and services available to accommodate this development or this zone, and there's existing wastewater water, stormwater, because this is an urbanized area, there's also fire and police available, and so the public utilities and services are adequate to support the proposed zone, and so that criteria is also met. Criteria four is that the zoning district satisfies the goals and policies of the Comp Plan. Well, the, one of the goals and policies of the Comp Plan is that we have public participation, and that has been available, and it's been solicited through the process, so that is met. The housing needs analysis does indicate that there is a need for RM-zoned land. This is just a five-thousand-square-foot lot, but there is a need for that. And so the change from the Office Professional to Residential Medium Density is equally consistent with the residential Comp Plan Map land use designation, so that criteria is met. The last criteria is not really applicable, because there's no proposed change in the existing transportation pattern or plan. So in conclusion, all the applicable criteria are met for the zone change. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the city council for this re-zone from Office Professional to Medium Density Residential, and I'd be happy to take any questions from the council and the mayor at this time, and then we'll move into the public hearing and deliberations and decision for the council.
Okay, all right, any questions, staff? Okay, thank you, Melissa. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then present it to the recorder. And then would the applicant like to come forward, and I think that's Brian Vandetta, and then if you can spell your last name and furnish your address, too. Thank you, Brian.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Brian Vandetta, Vandetta-V-A-N-D-E-T-T-A, address is sixty-three East Ash Street in Lebanon. I'm representing the applicant, who is the previous property owner, and as you can see, well, as you could see in the previous slides, this property is very small. It's fifty feet by one-hundred, it's owned Office Professional. My client owned this property, I believe, since two thousand and nine. We've worked off and on to try to find an Office Professional use that would fit on the property, had extreme trouble trying to balance the building size and the parking requirements, so we came up with the idea, because it was compatible with the Comprehensive Plan, to change the zone to an RMA zone, or an RM zone, excuse me. I believe Ms. Anderson did a wonderful job presenting the staff report, she identified all the criteria has been addressed and been satisfied, so I really have nothing further to add to that, but I would answer any questions if you may have some.
Thank you, any questions? No?
Do you have a plan as to what you're proposing to do?
That's a great question. So the property's been sold, I don't represent the current owner, but I do know that she does plan to build a duplex, a single-story duplex on the property, which would be very compatible with the triplex to the north and the single-family to the east.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And there wasn't anybody else that signed up to speak on this, so if there's anybody here that would like to speak in favor or against this application?
I'm Patricia Neal, and if you have...
Patricia? Okay, all right, thank you. So in case the tape didn't pick it up, she said her name was Patricia Neal. Okay, yeah. Okay, and with that, so, does staff have any response to any testimony presented? Okay, and with that, then I will declare the public hearing closed at eight-ten P.M. And counsel, do you have any questions of staff?
Could we hear the ordinance?
Yes, that's on page seventy-two.
An ordinance amending ordinance number four-four-four-one, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map, adopting findings for property located at an unaddressed property east of one-six-five-five Gary Street, Southeast Lynn County Assessor's Map number eleven-S-three-W-eight-C-A, tax lot twenty-two-oh-one, and declaring an emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time in title only?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number four-four-four-one, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map, adopting findings for property located at an unaddressed property east of sixteen-fifty-five Gary Street, Southeast Lynn County Assessor's Map number eleven-S-three-W-eight-C-A, tax lot twenty-two-oh-one, and declaring an emergency.
For the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, all right, thank you, thank you. Okay, within five days of the decision, the Community Development Director provides written notice of the decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than twenty-one days after the decision becomes final. Okay, that takes care of our public hearings this evening, and next on the agenda is business from the public. Anyone here that would like to come forward, bring an item forward to us? All right, not seeing anyone. And next is adoption of a resolution, this is for the transportation system development charges. Does staff have anything to comment on this item? It's on, resolution's on page ninety-two.
Ron Irish will be giving a quick staff report.
All right, Ron?
Good evening. Tonight, what you're considering is a resolution to shift SDC funding among three projects in our transportation system plan. Two of the projects would see an increase, two projects we think need the money for construction in the short term, the other project would lose money, it's a project that we think is farther out in time, so that's why the shift is happening. The three projects, one of the projects that would receive funding, Crocker Lane, a section of Crocker immediately south of Valley View, we expect to build that this coming summer, not this summer, but the following summer, twenty-sixteen, as part of an LID. The other project that we expect to receive funding is Lochner Road. It doesn't have a timeframe for construction, it's somewhat tied to Snow Temp's possible plans for expansion, and that road project would be adjacent to the Snow Temp frontage. So those are the two projects that would receive funding. The project that would give the funding up is a piece of Dogwood Avenue that is currently outside the city limits, but in our UGB, it's a section just west of Scrabble Hill Road. So the, the shift in funding wouldn't change the SDC fee for any new development, the fee would remain the same, what you would essentially be doing is just shifting money between projects. And with that, I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, all right, questions? This came to a work session previously, so... Okay, all right, so if not, we have a resolution on page ninety-two.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, thank you, thank you, Ron. Counsel, next you have adoption of the consent calendar, and if you don't need any items pulled off for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. And next is page one-fourteen, this is appointing Stephen Van Busker to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission.
Move for the appointment of Mr. Busker to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission?
Second.
And there was a second, all right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, and I think that just about catches me up on appointments that are needing to be made, but there's going to be coming, our next meeting would be a couple on the library that, the library board's renewals are done in the summertime, not the beginning of the year, so you'll have that at the next meeting. Okay, next is a report, this one's vacation of First Avenue Southwest, this is on page one-seventeen. And Bob, this is our Great Carousel project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. What I'm bringing forward to you tonight is a, is a proposal from staff to continue working with the applicant for the Carousel Museum to vacate right-of-way. The Carousel Museum has submitted a site plan review application, and one completeness issue with that application is that the proposed building would go into the right-of-way, and approximately one-thousand-seventy-five square feet of the building would be in the right-of-way. So to, for the application to be deemed complete, one of the items is that the city council must either initiate a street vacation, or the applicant would need to initiate, apply for a street vacation. Staff is recommending that the city council initiate the vacation requests, and there are a few reasons for that. One is that it would assist the applicant in meeting their one-hundred-and-eighty-day deadline for application completeness. It would also avoid the need for the applicant to resubmit and pay additional application fees. It would also avoid the need for the applicant to obtain signatures from the railroad and the post office, which would probably be difficult for them to obtain in the time period they have to, to, to complete their application. And it would continue facilitating progress with this application on the Carousel Project. So, staff recommends that the city council initiate this vacation proceedings. It's not a, it's not, if you were to initiate the vacation proceedings, it wouldn't be a decision on the request, it would simply be saying to staff, go ahead, prepare the application, bring it forward for, for future consideration, concurrent with the Carousel Project, as that continues to move forward. Happy to take any questions?
Just need adding heads, or you need that in the form of a motion to do that?
I think it has to be a motion to initiate the street vacation, but, yeah, Rich, question?
When, when that comes forward, is there going to be explanation of traffic plan, and or, because it looks like to me that we would be cutting that down to one lane at that, at that point?
Yeah, and fortunately, Ron is here, he might be able to speak even to the traffic plans for that area now, but with the site plan...
It would come before us, before it happened.
Yes, it would kind of be with the, we could provide that information with a vacation application to let you know what impacts it might have, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Bessie?
I would totally be in favor of us initiating it, because we know how hard it is to get the railroad, and I don't know what the post office, but, and it looks like it's just, is it just a long...
It's approximately, if you can see the cursor on the, on the TV screen, it's approximately this area here, along, along the street, where the building would jut out into the right-of-way. And as I understand it, there was some, some encouragement for that, because as you were looking down the street, east to west, you would actually be able to see that as a focal point, and it might draw visitors into the downtown area, which we're hoping to encourage, obviously. So, there is some sort of public benefit that we would hope to achieve from, from having that there.
Well, yes, and it also will, it will take the parking away from there, but it'll allow the people a little bit more chance to mingle and roam around, you know, rather than it being so tight, so, yeah, I have no problem with this at all.
Okay, all right. What would you like to do, counsel?
I would make a motion that we direct staff to go ahead with the initiation of the right-of-way.
Street vacation.
Street vacation, yeah.
Okay, you did a second, all right, so the motion's to initiate the street vacation, and there was a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, thank you, Bob, all right.
Madam Mayor, since, since Gordon and all the, a lot of the Carousel people here, I just want to say that last summer, my granddaughter was out here, and we took her and a bunch of girls to Carousel. You know, at the time, I thought, well, okay, they're there, great, you know, but I got her hat, Carousel hat, and when we went, just went back a couple weeks ago, first thing she brought out wearing is the Carousel hat. So that's the kind of, you know, impact it has on whoever goes through it, so I think it's, it's going to be a great thing, but I just had, I just had much, you know.
It's going to be fantastic, yes, so, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you, folks. Next is business from the council, and Rich, anything this evening?
I have fourteen thi, oh, no, I guess I have, a couple of things. Next Tuesday, Kiwanis is having a, a sawing-for schools demonstration at seven o'clock in the morning at my store, and if someone has not seen the little sawmill that could at work, email me, so I make sure that I have enough food, because that starts at six-thirty, and, then come on Tuesday.
In the morning?
That AM or PM?
AM. Hey, we get up and get going, you know, we're not, we're not the downtown Kiwanis. Second item, I am, on a personal note, I am going to put on a music program at Wilson House on Friday for about an hour and a quarter. Music that I find near and dear, and, I don't know, it's in Salem, it used to be the Methodist Retirement Hall, it's just what's happened.
Oh, great, have fun, so, thank you.
Is that in the morning, too?
No.
Okay.
That's in the afternoon.
Okay.
Well, their, their dinner time, that starts, I think, at four.
I believe it.
Anything else? Okay, all right.
I'll, I'll belay the other twelve items.
Okay, and Ray, I think you have an item?
Yes, I did put on the dais and everybody a proposal I'm going to be making pursuant to the bond issue that just passed. One of the things that I set, told multiple, many people I wanted to do, was to ensure that, uh, once we disposed of, however that happened, of the police facility, existing police facility, that that funding was then used to defray the cost of the project somehow, pay off the bond, et cetera, et cetera, or whatever, however that came to. So I came up with some wording, and it may or may not be correct, but I think it covers all the bases and makes it, makes it after post. So I'm going to read it as a proposal, and I propose this as a motion, and we'll see what happens from there. "Any funds received from the sale or transfer of the existing Jackson Street Police Facility shall be held in account until completion of both the facilities authorized in the May nineteenth, twenty-fifteen election. The net proceeds shall only be used to cover any project costs which exceed the proposed budget of twenty-four-point-four million, or, in the alternative, shall be applied to the general obligation bond debt repayment schedule."
I would second, but I would ask a bit of a change.
Okay, so...
My thought is a little different.
Okay, so, Ray, you did the motion, and then that's a second, so, yeah, so you would have to suggest it for an amendment?
My, my suggestion is that you, you start with his transfer of the existing, be held not be held in account, you just don't talk about that, and that we would apply the fund to lower the, the funds to lower the cost of the projects. And that's it, without putting it in a special fund, without saying it's for an overrun.
Where would you, where do you put the money then, what, how do you account for it?
There are three-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventeen places they can put it, I mean, it's, you know, I just think... I mean, it's, you know, I just think we don't, we don't need to be specific about it, because frankly, the idea is to plug it back in and lower the expense of the, of the bonds.
Right.
And, and I don't, you know, I don't want there to be a pot of cash there sitting for someone to say, gee, we can have some overruns now.
Well, I think it's very prudent on us, though, too, because we never know of any sort of unforeseen, you know, cost and to, because then what if there was an overrun? Then where would you have the cash?
Well, we deal with it at that point. From my perspective, we, we made a deal with the voter. Here's the number we want you to think about. And I think that's the number we want to think about. I think that's the number that was fairly arrived at by, by everyone involved. And if stuff happens, okay, stuff happens. Most people are going to understand if, you know, you, you put the bucket in the ground and you, you find this gigantic hole, well, you know, that's something different than what you thought was there, and everyone would understand that. But to my way of thinking, you simply say, we're going to lower, use the, use the funds to lower the cost of the project, paying off part of the bond.
But you're not going to lower the, you're not going to lower the cost of the project. You're going to lower the payback.
The amount of money that is, we're indebted to.
There you go, okay.
Yeah, we have to, right.
This is, it's always, probably wiser if I just said nothing, but in my judgment, I mean, I don't think this hurts anything, but I don't know that it changes much either. I mean, we had, for one, it assumes that we're going to sell the property before, you know, the project accounting is all complete, which that may not happen.
Right, right.
You know, we had a similar circumstance with the library, where we, I believe, we sold the library, the old library roughly concurrent with the opening of the new one. I don't recall which, but we just used it to buy down the cost of the library in much the same way that you're proposing here.
Okay.
I mean, if we run into a circumstance where we have a need for additional money, we would come back to you and discuss it at the time. This is more of a, to me, this is more of a statement of intent.
Yeah.
And it's something, and obviously, it's something that can be changed by a vote of four members of the council, so I don't think it, I don't think it causes any problems.
Right, I just, I just want to, I just don't want it to be so wide open that it's so nebulous. I just want to say, hey, we're going to be paying down the debt or anything else that happens in an unforeseen circumstance. And, and then who knows what's going to happen in the future, but I don't want it just to be kind of wide open and loosey like that. That's my only concern.
Pay down the debt.
Well, so, okay, so.
But the only thing is, is the.
If we sold, if we sold the building first, real quickly, and paid down the debt, and then we ran into a huge cost overrun, how do we get the money?
We're going to be using the building.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have no place for it.
Until, until the other one is ready.
It won't be being put up for sale until the buildings or the new ones built, because we need to use it.
Unless, unless the, the police cars are now going to be desks and other things, too.
I'd like to ask, who'd want that police station anyway? We hear it's.
Oh, people across the street, the sheriff.
No, we.
There's an interest.
We, there is interest in the building, and it's, and it's not both from private and, and we've heard from both private and public sources. And I don't think anybody's ever claimed it was a useless building. I think what we've.
We don't want it.
The claim. That's true, we don't want it.
It doesn't fit our need right now.
It just doesn't meet our needs anymore. And, and it certainly would not, you know, it doesn't meet the needs of, of a police station any, anymore. But, but, yeah, as far as it being a building without value, no, it, it has value.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly.
Millions.
But the other, my other thought is, why paint ourselves into a corner? Why not just wait till all the things develop, and if we get some money out of it, use the money for what it ought to be used for?
Well, that's why I want to get, I want to get it on record that I'm saying we need to say, this is what we want to do. The whole intent is to use the funding from that, whatever that may be, however it comes in, at some point, to lower the overall costs of this, whether it be from the bond or anything else that may come up that we're not aware of. But at least we're on record as saying, this is what, this is our intent.
Exactly.
What if somebody says, I'll give you this piece of property if you give me that old police station? Then what do we do?
Come back and four of you would, four of you would.
Yes or no?
I think we're just making problems for ourselves.
We don't have four votes. But I think, I think when others come back, I think we probably would have four votes.
Well, so what you need to do is vote on this, and then that's, if there's not enough votes, and it comes back for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I think.
So you just vote on it, and then if it doesn't get four votes, it comes back for the next meeting for a vote. Okay? Any more discussion on the motion?
I just want to say, I think, you know, Ray was right in bringing this up, because it shows to the voters that that's what our, like you say, our intent is, that's what it's going to be used for. How, at that point, you know, how much we get, or whatever's going to, because there's going to be some expenses, but still, at least we'll have it somewhere saved to help with the bond.
In a designated fund.
Yep.
Well, I'm going to vote for this, even in Ray's version, just, you know. But the, the idea is, let's put it back into, reduce the debt. And I'm happy with that, I just.
Okay, me, too.
Okay, all right.
All the question?
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, so this will come back on two weeks. Council meeting. Okay, all right, is that it, Ray, for your item? Yes, okay, all right. Bessie, anything?
Not tonight, I don't think.
Okay, and Dick?
No.
Nothing? And I didn't have anything this evening, so Wes?
I just, a note to the council that I met with my colleague, the city manager of Corvallis and the county administrator today. We get together frequently, and just a status report on Mark, who I think we're all, we're all still interested in, is, he seems to be doing great. He reports that he's really enjoying his, his, start of his career as the city manager in Corvallis, although he is looking forward to the long-scheduled vacation that he had, that he's going, where he's going to Norway in July. But he's doing great, misses everybody, and said to say hello.
It was great, I saw him, well, Bessie and I saw him, and Chief saw him last week at a meeting at WCJC, so it was great seeing him participate in that meeting.
It was kind of strange seeing him walk in and sit on, like, their side.
Uh huh, I know, it was. Okay, anything else, Wes? No, staff, have anything?
Two real quick items, actually. One's a question. In the last couple of years, when we've brought our rate discussions forward for either water or sewer, we've started with a more condensed version of what our request is or recommendation is at the work session, then we follow that up at a council meeting with the, with the more detailed report. And in June here, we're going to be coming and talking about sewer rates, and I wanted to make sure that that approach is, is still okay, and you'd like to have the shorter version followed by the longer version, rather than two longer versions as we did a few years back.
Yeah, I think it's great having it come to the work session, and so, you know, we can be able to, you know, have time to really discuss it, and then come to the council meeting, so.
Okay.
So, unless the council wants a longer version at the council meeting.
No, doesn't.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yep.
The second item was, you asked for a report back after I met with the Thornton Lake group that had came and expressed some concerns, I think it was two meetings ago, perhaps? So I did get a chance to meet with that group, and I, I believe we satisfied all their concerns that they had about the road project, North Albany Road, and the impacts that they were concerned about on the lakes. They weren't familiar with all of the efforts that we went to to protect stormwater and improve stormwater quality before it's discharged to the lake. And so I think, I think we came to a place where they were comfortable with what we were proposing, so just reporting back on that.
Good news. Mm-hmm. Okay, is that it? All right, anyone else? So, okay, with that, we have an executive session, so we'll recess to executive session to discuss current litigation or litigation likely to be filed, and to discuss rural property transactions in accordance to RRS 192.6602HE. Okay, all right, thank you, folks.